...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 11th. It's 8:30 a.m. And what I'm gonna do today, before I consider a motion to approve the agenda, is we're going to have an executive session that will occur before items number three and four. So with that change to the agenda, could I... Is anyone willing to make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
I'll so move.
Second.
Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. All right, motion passes. We have an agenda. We've got the claims and the reports, which you can find in the share file. Next up, we have the consent agenda. I will consider a motion to approve consent agenda items.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. All right. Opportunity for public comment. Do we have anybody here from the public that would like to be heard? If so, step up to the podium and speak your piece.
You can speak in public comment, but you're here for a public hearing.
Okay, you're here for the public hearing, ma'am? Okay. Seeing no one from the public who would like to speak, do we have any commissioners who would like to make a report?
Mr. Chair, I would like to have John Rambo come up, please.
At our recent 4-H fundraiser...
Better speak here.
At our recent 4-H fundraiser, there was this plaque that was made, and it drew a lot of attention. Commissioner Gibbon decided that he wanted it, and I thought, I wanted it, and when this dust cleared, after considerable investment, I guess I won. So I'd like to put... Have you put this in a prominent place in our courthouse, which basically says, "4-H grows here." So anyway, and congratulations, that was a tremendous fundraiser.
Thank you, Jim.
That they had, you bet.
All right, thank you, John. Yeah, the 4-H did a fantastic job at putting together their fundraiser. Any other commissioners?
I would just like to comment, a week ago, I know that the Weed Board had our first meeting. It was held here, it was online, and so I would like to thank Terry Boyd and Russ Hagan for getting that organized, and I believe the information will be, obviously, available to everyone now, the fact that we're meeting here, and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Any other commissioners who'd like to make a report? All right, seeing none, we'll come on for regular business. We'll wait a minute here. Anybody else want to fill up the one minute that we have until our public hearing is set for? So at 8:35 a.m., we have a public hearing to consider a temporary on-sale malt beverage license. All right, it's 8:35 a.m. All right, now is the time and place for the public hearing to consider the temporary on-sale malt beverage license. Do we have the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you step up to the podium, please? All right. Go ahead, tell us what you... What you plan to do.
Okay. I'm the vice president of the Lennox Athletic Booster Club.
And could you say your name and address for the record, please?
Jennifer Slack, 28357 466th Avenue, Lennox, South Dakota.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm with the Lennox Athletic Booster Club, and we got the idea from Canton, who does a dueling pianos fundraiser, and had quite a bit of success with theirs, and so we were hoping to do a dueling pianos fundraiser in the fall before the athletics season kicks off for the year, and hoping to have a successful fundraiser at the 4-H grounds. Our plan is to have like a open house from 7:00 to 8:00, and then the dueling pianos would go from 8:00 to 10:30-ish 11:00. And so the... We were hoping to get the liquor license between 7:00 and 11:00 in order to host that fundraiser. We plan on not having anybody there under 21, so it'll be 21 and over attendance only. That's, I don't know, any questions?
I noticed you said liquor license, but you mean on-sale malt beverage license, right?
Okay, thank you, yes.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, on your application, and I know it wasn't... I don't believe it was you who filled it out, it was Heidi?
Right.
She checked the box that said she had been convicted of a felony.
Okay.
Is that a mistake, or is that accurate?
I am not aware of that. That sounds inaccurate.
Okay.
Do you...
She... That was a mistake.
Okay.
That's what I thought, because I looked her name up in the court system to see if that was true or not. She doesn't have...
It sounded highly doubtful.
Yeah, I thought so, too. And we've had a problem in the past with people doing the same thing, so I just wanted to make sure what was going on. Although, I did appreciate her candor, if that was the case, but turned out not to be the case, so, okay. Do you have anything else, ma'am?
Not unless you have any questions. I don't think so.
Okay, unless... If there's no other questions from the commission for the applicant, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the applicant's application? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the applicant's petition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the floor to public testimony, and ask the commissioners what their wishes are to do with the application. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll so move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks for coming.
All right, next issue on the agenda, our budget discussions with our auditor, Sherri Lund. Sherri, what do we got?
Well, they're gonna be pretty simple. I'm not going into the full detail. I'm gonna do that on the 25th, when I have more of the information. It'll be more of a comprehensive. What I want to do now is just go over the timeline that we're gonna have for the budget. So, May 25th, I'm gonna do a presentation regarding the department request. After this presentation, the department heads will discuss as requested by the board. So you'll set up meetings between May 25th and July 30th. July 15th is the last day that we can approve opt-outs. July 30th, the provisional budget will be completed, and the hearing will be advertised once a week for two consecutive weeks, prior to the first Tuesday in September. I plan on publishing the weeks of August 15th and the 22nd. September 7th, we'll have the budget hearing. September 14th, the budget discussed... Discussions for any changes, and hope to plan to adopt it on September 28th. What I need for me today is to discuss what percentages to be used for the non-collective bargaining agreement employees.
Mr. Chairman, does that have to be done today? I mean, this... I guess I haven't given this much thought yet.
This is just a guidance, so that we can start getting the budget documents prepared. Obviously, it's not anything set in stone until the budget's passed, but in order to continue moving with the budget, I need to know where to go with it.
Was this... Julia, was your... Did you make recommendations last week?
I did.
Do you want to share those again? If you would, please.
Sure. So I presented some data about the labor force, and then also what our other comparable entities are doing, but my recommendation was 2.5% increase to 3.25% increase. And the 3.25 comes into play, because that's what our current union individuals are receiving. So if you wanted to move that direction, that would be consistent with that approach for them.
Sherri, is it possible... And Commissioner Gibbon has a good point, to try to be fair for everybody. Is it possible to say, okay, if you did a 2%, it would be based on the current staff, it would be X cost to the budget?
Yep.
Or 2.5 is Y, and 3. is Z?
Based on Julia's recommendation, I did a 2.5 and a 3.25.
Okay.
So, last year, the salary budget was $11,217,073.06. With a 2.5, we are looking at an increase of $536,201.81. But in that number, we have to keep in mind, last year, we didn't have elections... Election official, or our election people budgeted, and we also have new positions, the HR, the VSO, and the state's attorney added to that. So taking those two numbers out of there, it's an increase of $245,537.26. Now, at the 3.25, that would bring the wage budget up to $11,804,554.44, an increased budget of $587,481.38. Again, with those other positions taken out of there, it's an overall increase of $296,816 from last year's budget. Did I do them too fast?
Of course you did.
I'm kind of a visionary person, Mr. Chair, so I would like to see it on paper, please.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
So, okay, so I... At about 2.5% with the new hires in, it's about a half million dollars. When you take those out, you have about $245,000 roughly. With the 3.25, you got $587,000, taken out, it's $296,000. Am I pretty close?
You're pretty close.
Yep. Okay.
And then, Sherri, there was also some discussion last week by Julia about when you look at what other entities of government around us are doing, they kind of came together and did like a 2% increase. Could you also just run the numbers at the 2% number as well?
Yep.
Thank you. And I guess if you just pass that around to everyone, that'll be, you know, offline, that'll be fine. Thank you. Anybody?
Do you want me to pull it up?
You don't need to write this, per se. I mean, if you could just distribute it after the fact, that's fine.
Yep, sure can.
Then everybody can look at it, and digest it, and process it on their own, however they want to. Okay, does anybody else have anything for the auditor?
I have a question for HR, if they're willing. They probably could touch base last week, but I missed it, unfortunately. The turnover factors, what are we looking at so currently on our percentage of turnover for the year?
As of last year, it ended just over 17%, and as of this year, we're at 6%.
6% so far?
Yep.
And of the people that are leaving, are most of them moving outside of the area, or just finding another occupation?
It's a mix of both, I would say.
Okay. All right, we'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Okay, so I won't have a percentage today, then. Is there anything else that you guys want me to present? I'm not... I'm not gonna be able to present on the 25th budget now, because I won't have a number. But is there anything else you want to see?
Well, you know, if you've got a timeline, and that's a flexible number, right? I mean, we're just... We're just projecting something out there.
Yep.
Okay. So commissioners, I know you want to hand it out, but can you compute that, that 2%? Can you compute that rather rapidly?
I can do it while you guys are in executive session.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Well, let's do it. Let's do it at that then.
Revisit it when you come back?
Let's do that, then, if you would.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, does any other commissioner have a question for the auditor, or any other... Anything else to say about budget discussions? Okay, if not, we'll close the floor on that issue. I would like to call for an executive session under... And this will be fairly quick. Under SDCL 1-25-2, sub 1, to talk about prospective employees. Would somebody be willing to offer a motion on that?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Shaun, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. Okay, we'll be in executive session. Thank you. We'll continue on with our agenda items number three and four, and five and six.
Can we get a motion to exit executive session?
Uh, yeah. Can I have a...
Second.
Shaun, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes. All right, we're out of executive session, we're back in regular session. Julia, go ahead.
The first is to hire Hannah Mulder as a full-time human resources technician for the Veterans Services Office in the Human Resources Department at 1869 per hour effective the 18th of May.
Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Shaun, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
And next is to hire Erica Reber as a full-time deputy state's attorney for the state's attorney's office at 2,868-80, bi-weekly, effective the 10th of May.
So moved. Second.
Shaun, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Sherri, execute agreement with BNSF.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have before you an agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. This is regarding our 21 paving project on 106. We'll be crossing one of their rail lines, and basically, this agreement is to authorize us to occupy there right away when we're paving up to the tracks. So I'm looking for approval and authorize the chair to sign this agreement.
I so move.
Second. Shaun, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
I'll save my comment for afterwards, so yes to this agreement.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Terry, I would like us to make a comment to Burlington Northern Santa Fe, that when they're doing service work on township across our township roads, they at least leave one access point at all times on one of the township roads in a three-mile stretch, because it does... While farmers are trying to actively participate in farming, try to get through those roads, and when they have to go out of their way to such an extent, it is quite a burden, especially when the only thing open is the highway and the size of the equipment. So I know we have a liaison to that board, or if you're visiting with them, see what it would take for them to cooperate that. They just recently, this spring, were working on a stretch west of... Or east of T, and it created quite a issue for local individuals trying to farm this year, so...
I get it. I did receive a call from a property owner on one of those stretches in a township road next to railroad line that was closed, and they were very displeased, because they had no notification on it from them as well, either, so...
And it wasn't just for a day, this was for weeks, weeks at a time, so...
Yep. I guess I... I told her, I said, "I have no control over what they do."
No, we know that, but we sure can say... Remind them that...
Well, you know, that's what I thought with the... With our project, crossing on the highway up there on 106, but again, they have all the authority in the world, because they were there first, so... And we're crossing them.
Right.
So that's what I was told. So unfortunately, they got more power than...
It's just a reminder, they're trying to work within the area as well, so...
Correct, correct. So, anything else?
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, agenda item number six, medical cannabis ordinance. Bill Golden.
Good morning.
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 So there has been a lot of discussion between the different counties, specifically Minnehaw County, Lincoln County, Sioux Falls, that medical marijuana is going to become legal on July 1st. In those ordinances, there are abilities for the counties to have licensing regulations determine the numbers. And so at the moment, we do not have any zoning regulations, really, that directly addresses cultivation, testing facilities, manufacturing facilities, and retail facilities. And so the different counties and the different state's attorneys have been discussing this matter, and trying to come up with some type of regulations, or some type of scheme, in order to address the issue. And so really, what I'm here for is some direction on which way the county wants to go, because if we don't place any regulations in place, the way the scheme is set up, is that once the state issues... Gets an application, and the application is filled out and approved, and they meet the qualifications, then they're able to come to Lincoln County and open a facility. And so then, we're gonna have to address the issue of how does it fit into our comprehensive zoning plan? How many of those facilities do you want in the county? Where do you want them located at? Do you want a licensing scheme, which is authorized by the statute, where you can license them something similar to, like alcohol? So they would have to be approved, and come before the commission, and pay for a licensing fee. So these are all things that currently are unaddressed, and we don't have any ordinances for. I have started drafting a sample, just because it helped frame the question for me as much as anything else, and what I did is looked at the alcohol statutes, and mirrored them, and then included the fact that there's four separate type of facilities that can come into a county. One of them's gonna be the retail establishment. There's gonna be security issues with that, when you have marijuana being sold there, and who can come in and who can buy, whether or not, one, whether or not it's going to be recreational, that's up at the Supreme Court at this point, we don't know if it's going to be held constitutional or not, it's an open question. But on July 1st, it will be... Definitely take effect, unless the court intervenes. When it comes to medical marijuana, it will come into effect on July 1st. It's the same thing with the retail facilities. If the county wants to have some control over it, then there needs to be ordinances in place, zoning needs to be addressed, and licensing, if the board wants to license these facilities. Cultivation facilities, what do you want them to look like? Where would you like them to be at? Do you want restrictions? What type of restrictions? What type, or none? The testing facilities, which I understand the marijuana industry is very big on having everything tested, because they want to be able to tell people what quality or strength it is when they go to... Go ahead and sell it. The other issue is manufacturing, for like gummies, candies, things along those lines. One of the things that's been addressed is what type of packaging is going to, and what type of marketing does the county want it to allow? So there's a whole regulatory scheme that could be put in place, or not. So I'm just looking for at least some direction. Would you like me to put a sample of something together and bring it to the board? Would you like to not do anything? Do you have other suggestions?
Bill, NACO has certainly addressed this for other counties and other states, and I think it's incumbent upon us to put something in place. I mean, we can't be... This isn't the Wild West, and we've got 65,000 people in our county now, plus. So when you talk about number of vendors, locations, license, security issues, testing facilities, packaging, we have to have something in place that are guidelines, or I think we're going to have a mess, because we either... Whenever you do preventative kinds of activities, rather than you try to... Remediation is not an answer. So I would say, Bill, I'd be happy to be volunteer to work with you, and any other commissioners, on putting something together that we can present, that has some guidelines for potential sales, and we... And we're under the gun, because July 1st is the drop-dead date, so...
Bill, I agree with Commissioner Schmidt. We need to move forward with this. I know that there's been some discussion in other parts of the state, other counties, of wanting to put a moratorium in place, or to put a pause on this. I think, given the fact that it not only passed, and will come into law, but it passed with some pretty resounding strength in this county, 74 to 26, that it's incumbent upon us to move forward, and to put responsible and reasonable regulations in place as it regards this. So I think I'm of the mind of wanting to move forward and put this into effect, as what the voters told us to do. And let's get in front of this, and let's... Let's start putting together some zoning regulations here, and try to figure this thing out. I don't think it'll be that difficult, given the fact that many other states and counties around the country have grappled with this over the last decade or so. So I think there's a large body of work out there that we can draw upon for inspiration from other states, and I think Yankton County already grappled with this, and...
They did.
Put something into place already.
They have.
Yeah, they're ahead of the power curve here, but I do think with our proximity to Sioux Falls, just given the population base that we have encompassing northern Sioux Falls, I could see a situation jurisdictionally, similar to where people from Minnesota like to buy fireworks in South Dakota, right? And the same thing may happen here. And I think that's a nod to what Commissioner Schmidt is saying about having 65,000 people with our population. There's gonna be a certain number of that 65,000 who may be issued a medical marijuana, medical cannabis card, and they're gonna want someplace to be able to purchase that from. So let's get a move on with this, and let's crack the shell, let's figure it out, and get something in place.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else?
Bill, you and I'll talk. Okay?
Very well. Thank you, Bill. Okay, that's the last agenda item here. Is there any other need for an executive session beyond what we've already discussed?
Mr. Chair, I'd offer a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Let's do... I thought we were gonna take...
Are you ready for it, or not?
Oh, are you ready?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna look at these and come up with a recommendation, so we keep...
Revisit the...
Okay, so the motion to adjourn's withdrawn, and we'll circle back to the budget discussion.
Looking... This is just a... Looking at a 2% situation, which would show overall increase with the new people, understand, Sherri. We got $11,719 versus $11,753. Given the fact of our... Of discussion of where wages are today, I mean, if you followed in... I can only say for Sioux Falls, but I know that wages are on the increase all over. I mean, a manager in McDonald's with the new projections can make up to $85,000... in McDonald's with the new projections can make up to $85,000 a year. That's McDonald's. Eighty-five thousand. So, we got to put in perspective, not that, not that there's anything wrong with being manager and frying hamburgers and making french fries and all that stuff, but the detailed work that we have here is government. And while we got to be responsible to taxpayers, I understand that, and with everything else, yet you got to have, maintain a proper workforce. So, when I look between a 2% and a 2.5%, I'm thinking, well, there's not a lot of difference here. I mean, when you, when it really boils down. Now, you could dial this down, you could make a comment and saying, well, we don't want to do that, we want to, we want to be more fiscal responsible, and we could go to 1.5% or we could go to 1%. Well, that sends a message to the employees about two different things. One, from us, from our standpoint, it could be that we're fiscally responsible in trying to hold down the budget for taxpayers, which is certainly something I think everybody behind this DSS wants to do. On the other hand, it sends a message to your employees, well, look, how do you expect us? Because inflation is coming in, our costs are going up, everything is going up. Why are you not wanting to take care of us? And if I can find another job somewhere else, I'm going to jump ship. And today, nothing wrong with millennials, but they will leave for whatever amount of money, because that's what they do. So, I think we have to try to have a delicate balance here on how we send a message and how we treat our current employees fairly, but yet are fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. So, I, you know, I look at this and I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm, 2.5%, what's wrong with that? I look at that number, and I know, the other thing I'm going to bring up as well, because it's always there, is a step increase, which everybody has entitled to because that's part of what our salary structure is. It's like a school system, Jim, you, every year you had, you got, you got a step increase because you taught a year longer, right, wrong or indifferent, I'm not going to debate that. But these are actual raises, living conditions. And I think our CPI, if I'm not mistaken, is up 3%. Is that, is that fairly close?
CPI for what we can charge on taxes is 1.7.
Yeah, what we can charge, but the CPI overall is up 3%.
Yeah.
Concerned, yeah. So, I mean, I understand how we have to work because of our restrictions from, you know, we can go CPI or 3%, which is ever less. Well, that's what we take. But the overall cost has gone up about 3%. So, I'm thinking, okay, how do you treat this fair? So, commissioners, I look at this and I, I don't know, I'm not offering a motion here, but I'd just like to hear from you as to where you are on this thing, different, three different scenarios we have.
All right, I'll buy donuts.
Any other?
Well, Commissioner Schmidt, I read the same article that you did in the Sioux Falls Business Journal last night, right?
Yep.
It said, a manager, the manager at each McDonald's could make up to 85,000. And people who are starting out at the restaurant at McDonald's could start making up to 13 to 15 dollars per hour. I read that very same article. That same article said that there's 23,000 job listings in the state of South Dakota right now, and 10,000 of those job listings are from the Sioux Falls area. Clearly, there is something going on in our workforce that we're going to have to take into consideration with regard to recruiting new employees and into managing our workforce here at the county. We do need to make a distinction between recruiting and retention, though. Those are two different concepts. The retention part is keeping the employees we have, and of course, the recruiting is finding new employees that we don't have yet, but that we need into the future. So, I'm going to reserve any comment on the percentages right now until I hear more numbers from Julia. We can dig into this in the future. We don't have to do it right now, today, that, you know, what our recruiting percentages are, what our retention percentages are. I think I want to know what our, every time we advertise a job here at the county, and this is a important discussion we need to have in terms of managing our workforce, not only for the immediate future, but for the next five, 10 years as well, is how many people are applying for these jobs? What is the quality of those applicants? What are you hearing back? What is the long-term feedback? Not just for maybe one position, but, you know, over the last couple of years, what are you hearing for feedback from these people? Are we offering the right salary schedule when we're trying to recruit these people into the workforce? Are we losing employees because we may not be offering the right salary? It is government. We are somewhat limited in our ability to offer, I guess what I would call perks or benefits to people. But at the same time, we're, at the same time, we're somewhat limited only by our own imagination, right? Because there's other things we can do, thinking outside the box, in terms of how we can manage our workforce that maybe we haven't done in the past. So, I'm very interested in hearing all of those things before I jump on board with any kind of percentage. I do agree with Commissioner Schmidt, though. It is becoming very competitive out there to recruit new employees. So, that's kind of why I'm drawing the distinction between recruiting and retention, just at this initial juncture. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no problem with any of the requests that you've made. I just say, Sherry, how far, if we do this in next week, we do have a meeting next week, correct? Okay. Does that delay your, did that delay your?
Oh, we don't have a meeting next week. The next meeting's on the 25th. Yeah, it delays us. That's why we talked about it last week, we're talking about it this weekend.
Okay.
Because then I'll have a week to get all the stuff together so they can see the overall budget. I mean, these are numbers. These are nothing written in stone. It's a starting point. We, we know we're capable of cutting where we need to. So, if we're not happy with where the numbers fall, then we cut it. But without having these numbers in there, I can't even begin to prepare the budget, which is not a week process, two-day process. It's, it takes, it's a little time consuming. That's why I wanted just a number. I mean, you can cut it if you want to, but I just need a number to start at. You know, I would say, to go along with the, because in these numbers that I gave you, the union numbers are at the 3.25 because they're guaranteed that. So, why not start at the 3.25 with the employees and the board and everybody that is listening to this, the understanding that that is not the number that we may necessarily stick with. We have got money coming in for the, the 11 million dollars coming in. We've got reimbursements coming in from the airport. The county overall is not in a horrible position.
Sherry, what is the step again?
What is?
The step is what in our salary schedule?
2.5 for the step increase. But I think that you should just, it's, again, you're not making a decision. You're not saying, this is what we're going to pay people. This is just so I can get the budget worksheets together. So, put it even with the sheriff's department so we can see where it would land overall in the budget. Looking at these numbers is not fair because you're not seeing the whole budget.
Right.
I mean, I, I just, and if you don't like the way the 3.25 lays in the budget, cut from there, but at least give us an opportunity to look at, see what it would be like.
Mr. Chairman.
Tell me this. Go ahead, Commissioner Gibbon.
No, I, I just want to comment that, you know, in my world, you know, I know educators with 30 years of experience that are still struggling to make $60,000. And, you know, we always hear the adage, well, educators don't work in the summer. And I, I always said to people, I followed the 52 rule. You put in five, 10-hour days and two on the weekends, and you're going to be an exceptional teacher, an exceptional educator. And, you know, those 12 extra hours times 36 weeks, that earned your summer off. So, I mean, there's that world too. And there's a lot of school districts that have eliminated salary schedules because they haven't been able to afford it in the past. So, I mean, I, I see what we're talking about in the business world, but yet in the education world, there's, I'm hoping those salaries can continue to rise as well. So, there are those that will argue that these pay raises are probably right now because of the market, but there's a lot of people that aren't at that level as well.
Sherry, I know that there's probably some diversity of opinion on this commission as to these numbers. What is the harm in just putting together, like we do in the Army, three different courses of action? Can you just put together a 2.0, a 2.5, and a 3.25 so people can see on paper, right in front of them, what the different options are?
So, you want me to work up three different budgets?
Well, you know, last year we did 14, I think.
Well, I know, that's what I'm trying to prevent because.
Right. And, and I think if, we won't do the process justice if we pigeonhole ourselves into a 3.25. I think if you give us a menu of options, it helps with the diversity of opinion that you probably have here. And I understand and appreciate the fact, it's going to be a little bit more work, but I think the public and everybody involved will probably be more appreciative of the fact that we considered all of the altern, or a menu of the alternatives rather than, you know, just the union mandated one at the beginning. I think that will really help out with trying to create consensus to get where we need to go. I would ask you to consider that.
Oh, absolutely.
Sherry, I have a question. When, we have a union situation. They are, they are, what level are they?
I can't speak on that.
Oh.
That's a.
Okay.
I bet, what do you mean by what level?
Bill, don't, you don't have to shake your head. I'm probably in terrible character again. But what always bothers me is if we, if we give our non-union employees X, and we turn around and we have to collective bargain with a union and they get Y, I don't think that's fair. And I don't think it's been fair in the past because I know there's been a disparity between that, and that just rubs me the wrong way. I think if we're going to give a raise, we give a raise to the same, to everybody, because just because you belong to a union or you're non-union. I'll show my bias there, but anyway, leave that alone.
No, those are all good comments, Commissioner Schmidt. Anybody else want to contribute to the conversation today? If not, and I don't want to cut you off if you want to think about things for a minute, but if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm not in a hurry to leave, but, but if, if anybody else has any comments, go ahead and make them, that's fine. I just want to keep us moving along.
Well, I think that, I don't know that there's a consensus to, you know, put, put something on today that you're going to get your majority. And Sherry, we just tripled your load, but.
That's kind of used to it.
I think in this, I think in these times, I don't, I don't disagree. I think it's something we should vent and take as seriously as we can so that we make a decision that we're all comfortable with. So, if it means that we have to bring you extra popcorn sometime or whatever.
Or you can take bribes. Not even popcorn.
Madam Auditor.
It's my pleasure to work for you.
Question, is, is this correct that you were part of preparing 14 budgets for this current year?
I was aware of them. Last year when Marlene was doing them, I, Franny and Marlene did them a lot together. So.
Yeah, we did.
I just, I know that it was, it's a strain, and then you're trying to keep the difference, you know, differences straight so that every, they flow through all of them. So, that's why I'm saying is, it's incumbent, but we'll do it.
Yeah, and I think here, you know, it's not as if we're saying, do one and 1.1 and 1.2 and 1.3.
Well, and I appreciate that.
You know, we're, we're, we are going off of what Julia said. You know, there's a rational basis for this 2.0, 2.5, and 3.25, you know, based of, off those levels created by, one is the average of what the other municipal entities are doing. I think it's like collective average, right? The 2.0, and then the 2.5. And remind me again where the 2.5 came from?
That was taking into consideration all of the factors.
Okay.
That would be my recommended minimum.
Okay.
And then the 3.25 is where the collective bargain.
Thank you. So, I do, you know, there's some pretty solid support for coming up with each of these numbers, as opposed to, you know, just pulling them out of thin air. So, I do think there's some solid support for those three courses of action.
So, I should be able to have them together for you on the 25th when we meet?
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's a good question because I was thinking in my mind, do we need to meet next week?
No.
Okay.
No, no. I didn't, no, I'll have them together. That actually, that week will give me the time to put them together.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll have them ready for on the 25th.
Okay.
And I'll just move on with my budget presentation as I was going to, with the difference being, the end number being with the different wages in there.
Right. And I know in some prior years, you know, I guess, we'll get these courses of action from you, and then I guess, as we move forward, we can determine whether we need to have some working sessions or not.
Yeah, I agree.
And that'll, I guess that determination is a little premature at this point, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I will, again, and if you want to continue to sit here, I have no problem with that. Or I will continue, or I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You're going to make your motion?
I'll make, go ahead. I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Not everybody all at once, okay? All right, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Thank you.